Okay, very good. Thank you. We just exited executive session, the brief we talk about on the police chief contract. Exit with no further ado, I'll call, we've already called the meeting to order, so no further ado, we'll actually proceed with the agenda. David, could you please read the agenda for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First going to amend or approve the agenda and then a period of public comment. We started at 6:45 PM with an executive session. Strategy session discussion to prepare for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct negotiations with non-union personnel. And to obtain legal advice from town council pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, A two and seven. And Suffolk Construction versus DKM four-four-nine Massachusetts four-four-four year two thousand and seven police chief. The first item is a consent agenda with payroll warrant and draft minutes of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one and July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. And the setting the next meeting dates of September ninth, twenty twenty-one and September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. The second item is consideration of vote to enter into a police chief contract with Thomas Galvin. Item three is OPEB presentation Heidi Doyle Treasurer with Odyssey Advisors. Item four is consideration of useful life statement with Heidi Doyle Treasurer. Item five, consideration of complete streets application with Chris Owen Chair Planning Board. Item six is consideration of various appointments. Library Board of Trustees jointly with the Board of Trustees for Mary McKenna to fill a vacancy until the twenty twenty-two annual town election. Metropolitan Area Council Appointment Marion Neutre reappointment for a term to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. And Sherburne Open Space Committee with Tim Batchelder new for a term to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four and Samuel Nelson. New member for a term to expire June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Item seven, consideration of acceptance of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Item eight, consideration of declaration of Sherburne Affordable Housing Trust Addy May Weiss. Item nine, consideration of a fall twenty twenty-one special town meeting date. Item ten, consideration of routine business with select board review of meeting calendar through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Town Administrator Report. And when executive session. Item one, to discuss strategy with respect to threaten potential litigation if the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board in the town. And the chair does so declare to discuss the town library pursuant to MGL, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, A three and seven. And Suffolk Construction VDCM four-four-nine Massachusetts four-four-four year two thousand and seven. Item two, to meet with town council and the Chair of the Conservation Commission to discuss a complaint letter dated August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one from Jonathan Hudson-Walker. And Lisa Hudson-Walker of Silverwood Farm LLC against the Conservation Commission pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, chapter thirty A. Section twenty-one, A one, three and seven and Suffolk Construction VDCM four-four-nine Massachusetts four-four-four year two thousand and seven. Item three, strategy session discussion to prepare for negotiations with non-union personnel. And/or to conduct negotiations with non-union personnel and to obtain legal advice from town council. Pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, A two-seven. And Suffolk Construction VDCM four-four-nine Massachusetts four-four-four year two thousand and seven town administrator. And that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion relative to the agenda, please?
I move that we accept the agenda as previously read.
Okay, got a second.
Second.
All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marianne?
Mary, you're muted, Mary.
I think she's frozen though.
Try again now, try again.
I.
Oh, very good. Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
Okay. Um, now, under, just you know, under that item, maybe, um. Maybe it's relative to talk about the, uh, the meeting dates, and maybe I'm actually saying this before we actually, um. Uh, what do you call it? Did, uh, did, uh, that was instead, Jen, I'm sorry. Number one, consent agenda. And I do have something to say about this. Um, so even though it says here on your background material that the calendar will be reviewed on the select board reports, I do want to make a comment. I felt last meeting, we kind of brought up spontaneously and I thought made it made what I believe to be incorrect decision with just minimal discussion. And that was about changing our meetings from every other Thursday to, uh, second and fourth Thursday. And I started to look ahead, the second and fourth Thursday means Veterans Day, um, yeah, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, Eve. Where the twenty-third, whereas all those dates are skipped if we actually hear to the every other that we're currently on right now. And, um, and personally, I like the every, every other. I think it makes a little more predictability. At least in schedule and it adds a couple of meetings a year. We still have to address, Paul had a conflict, which I'm, you know, willing to address that, you know, we kind of did it as a band, as a way of addressing Paul's conflict, but he said, that's how it came up. And we can still talk about that, but I'd like to know people's feelings on resuming, going back to the every other versus the second and fourth that we talked about, um, last meeting.
I'm in support of that, Eric. I think that makes, that makes sense. I think we've had busy agendas, so I think we need to meet every other week and, you know, maybe gets around the holidays and we're not as busy for whatever reason, but I feel like consistently, we've had very busy meetings and I think we should with every other week.
Okay, that's all I like. So, Paul, what was the date you couldn't make?
November four. So I've already committed, based on the discussion last week, I've already committed to attend the special town meeting in another community on that day.
Unfortunately, the next one is the eleventh, which is Veterans Day, and I don't think we should or can have it on that day. Um, any thoughts on basically doubling up, making it October, October twenty-eighth? Which is the Thursday before or so forth, which means we'll have basically two back-to-back, we'll have, um. We call October twenty-one and October twenty-eight.
I've said this in the past and no, no offense to Paul, I know Paul's committed to this and we talked about it last time, but we do have a five-member board and that's one of the reasons that the board was expanded from three to five members. So if one person has to miss. Then I think it's more important to stick with a consistent schedule.
Okay, I guess what are, what are other people's thoughts on? First, is everyone on board was sticking to every other, we, um, every other Thursday before you go on about the, about the eleven-four? Is there, is anyone opposed?
I, I am not opposed. I'm, I'm in favor of it, but the issue that drove the discussion last time was really conflict with the Conservation Commission. Which is another, you know, governing town. So, uh, I think when there are conflicts with Conservation Commission. We may just have to accommodate somehow. Uh, although I'm in favor of every other week.
I think maybe they need to accommodate their schedule to meet our, I think it's important as the kind of the governing body of the town that we meet consistently the other week. And they may have to adjust their schedule.
That's an option. Sure.
That was a point I, that was a point I had thought of also, and you know, probably includes ZBA in addition to CONCOM too. It's not just CONCOM, we're singling out. I think this is a great move because we can have some. If we do, you know, the first and the, or the second and the fourth, we could have three weeks between some meetings if they happen to be a thirty-one day month in the way the days fell, so. It's just consistent. We always know that we're going to meet two weeks from the night we're meeting, so. And, and to, to what George said, you know, let's wait and see where Paul is. If, if, if we're approaching November fourth and Paul's going to miss a meeting, rather than skip a meeting, maybe we could, um, well, there will be four of us, but maybe we can also defer an item on the agenda that's of particular interest to Paul or that is of a special need of his expertise on the agenda, we could just defer it to a different meeting so he didn't miss a topic where his input was particularly crucial. Not that we don't want your input all the time, Paul, but you know, there may be some that we could, uh, you know. Re-sequence the agenda also to accommodate that.
Yeah, we may, we may need flexibility for other members from time to time. So I think that's reasonable.
All right. So, well, we'll keep it at every other and, uh, we'll play it out as, as the fourth approaches. You know, see if we either adjusted a week or not, and we'll play that out because we have a month of something to decide. Okay, so that's that one, that one there. Um. I guess anything else with the consent agenda?
We'll have approval.
With approval, okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marianne?
I.
Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
And I might as well. Now, next agenda item is a consideration of vote to enter a police chief contract with Tom Galvin. Now, Tom, just, you know, has texted me a couple of times saying he's having, um, connection issues. He has volume, is having an audio issue. Um, I don't think we need to hear from him on this, um. On this vote.
I see his video here, I see he's on.
And just to update, um, the general pop, uh, attendees. Tom, join us in the executive session. Um, we pretty much have a finalized contract. There was just one or two things that he'll get a final draft of in, um. Um, on Monday and, uh, I think ready to execute it that week. So I guess if Chris is here, Chris, remind me, how should we make this vote?
So what, what I would recommend is that, um. The board vote to approve the contract with the essential terms that are outlined in the draft in terms of the, the term of the appointment. Which is, just for clarity purposes, would be November first of twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. With the relevant salary set forth in section three of the contract, which is one hundred and sixty thousand dollars starting salary. To be adjusted in July first of twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. And with the proviso that certain, um. Changes of, of other, of other texts unrelated to compensation and term will be made and if the and the thought is the board would approve such changes by this vote. And then if, if, if people can, when there's a, a contract ready to be signed. We, you could come in and sign and then if any board member, if there wasn't three, if there were further questions, we could take it up at the next meeting, but what I think the consensus was is that we are ninety-five percent of the way there here with this contract. And there are certain two provisions that need to be adjusted in particular, which can be done, uh, we think rather expeditiously. So that would be the proposal is that you, the board moved to approve the contracts along as it uh, obtains the agreement of, of, uh, the chief, the incoming chief, uh, town council and the board of selectmen chair. That's my proposed motion.
I'm moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marianne?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
And I am also I. So to clarify, Chris, we has voted, we voted to, to execute this. You know, um, if everyone's in agreement and let's say he signs the contract early next week, would, do we show up one at a time? Because you want to give him confidence, basically, um. That he can give notice and he has a sixty-day notice requirement and, um. That's why November one is kind of critical, is only a few days buffer in there. Would that vote, are we basically authorized to show up? Next week after we get his signed copy to all execute ourselves?
Yes, so long as the chief agrees, uh, myself or Chris, Christopher Brown in my office and you as chair. That yet the board members could come in and sign. The only proviso would be if any board member, if there's not three people willing to sign it, then they'd have to come up at the next meeting. I think we can get agreement on this, but your vote does allow it to be signed between now and the next meeting. It does not need to wait till the next meeting. It can happen next week.
Very good, very good, excellent, okay.
And just so, Eric, uh, Tom, just because his audio is not working, but he chatted, he just wants to say thank you and I look forward to getting started.
Oh, excellent.
That's a message from Tom.
Yeah, I see it in the chat. Very good. I don't always have the chat on. I should turn it on more often.
Well, we got more.
My ADD is bad enough, last thing, and he's a distraction like that. Um, okay. So, uh, next up, agenda item number three. Open presentation Heidi Doyle Treasurer and I think also with their consultants, um, Odyssey Advisors. Heidi, you on?
Yes, good evening. So I'd like to present Parker Elmore, who's with Odyssey Advisors. He is the town's actuarial consultant and I think he can give us a little bit more information about his background. This is to be a kind of an annual update on our OPEB and where the town is and where we are in our funding and to see if anyone has any questions. So I'm going to turn it over to Parker and see if we can have him share his screen for a brief presentation.
You, you should be all set, Parker, on sharing your screen.
All right, well, let me share this and hopefully it's going to do what I want. All right, the magic, the magic of screen share. All right, got that and. All right. All right. Uh, well, thank you all for having me out. I appreciate it and I'll do whatever I can to, to get you through this stuff. I know it's complicated stuff, but we'll try and get through it in a way that is as logical as we can make it. And if you have questions along the way, certainly ask it anytime. Don't feel like you have to wait for the end. Um, so want to make this as interactive and helpful as possible. Give you the quick thirty-second overview about our firm. We've worked with you guys for quite a while. We were founded in nineteen ninety-eight. I've been doing this stuff a lot longer, which basically means I'm old. Um, we work for about, at this point, almost five hundred municipalities. We have office in Connecticut, in Las Vegas, where I'll be, uh, Mon- Monday, I think. I don't know. They all blend together. Um, we're in thirty-seven, thirty-eight states, Europe, Australia, South America, so I spend a lot of time in the air. I am a Delta frequent flyer, so it is what it is. Um, so anyway, so with that said, um, here's the key thing. If I look at your guys' numbers over the, over the last year. Your liabilities went from eight point six million dollars. Let's just back up for a second. What is OPEB? Let's just start with that. So OPEB is basically the benefits your employees receive in retirement in the form of medical and life insurance benefits. And it's really medical, medical is where all the money is. So if, if I work for you for twenty years, let's say, I'm fifty-seven years old, I retire. I can take medical benefits for myself and my spouse for the rest of my life, assuming I pay my share. The value of that promise that you guys have made was eight point six million dollars. Now it's nine point two million dollars. Part of that is the passage of time, you know, the time value of money, things cost more, so liabilities go up. The other issue is your interest rate went down slightly, which we'll talk about in a minute. Fiduciary net position, which we used to call assets, but Gatsby, I guess, thought that was too confusing, so fiduciary net position it is. Went from one point six million to two point three million. You guys had a very good year on the asset side, like a lot of people. Uh, your investment funded very well, about twenty-seven percent rate of return. I don't forecast that to happen every year, but say thank you when it does and, and that's great. So your, your net unfunded liability, what we now call net OPEB liability of six point nine million and change to just a hair over six point nine. So you got a little bit better off. So the service cost, this is the value of benefits being earned during the year by your active population. So think of it this way, I work for you, I make fifty thousand dollars a year. But I'm also receiving effectively deferred compensation that'll be payable after I retire in the form of medical benefits. So that's really what this represents is this two hundred and forty grand effective deferred compensation. Financial statement expense, it's an interesting concept, but in the municipal context, it's kind of meaningless. In the corporate context, this would be, hey, we, earnings per share were X, we all got a bonus based on that. Earnings per share in the municipal context really don't matter. You don't have that, that concept. Uh, you guys did contribute two hundred thousand dollars to the trust, good for you. And the retiree only shares, and this is not all medical costs, but this is the net cost for retirees only was about four hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. So we have this net OPEB expense, again, not a big deal. Now, the discount rate, this is the interest rate I use to bring liabilities back to today. So much like your mortgage payment has a certain value, same thing here. That benefit payment of your twenty fifty-eight, I need to bring that back to today and figure out what is that worth? A higher interest rate means a lower liability and vice versa. That interest rate came down slightly simply because when you have years like twenty-seven percent, what that generally means is there is less available to get in the future in the market. So the future expectation of returns in the market has come down. So that's why that interest rate came down by a quarter point. Now, this was what's called an interim year or a roll-forward year, so we only do a full valuation every other year. In the intermediate year, which is this year, we roll the numbers forward by year, we update assets, we update interest rates. But that's really all we're doing in that interim year. So in this case, the only thing that really happened was your assets did very, very well. And your interest rate went down, which increased your liabilities by two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Now, here's the thing. Assumptions do not change the cost of your plan. It's not like it cost you another two hundred and sixty thousand dollars because interest rates went down. The benefit payments are the benefit payments, nothing changed. What this changes is what number goes on your financial statement. That's what assumptions do. So when do we recognize numbers on your financials and at what level? So that's really what that's about. So what are all these actuarial assumptions we talk about? We got the discount rate, we just spoke about, went from seven down to six and three quarters. Then there's the probability that people terminate employment in a given year. So I get hired today. What's the probability I'm still there a year from now? Two, five, ten, twenty? I make it all the way to fifty-five or fifty-eight. What's the probability I retire in a given year? Maybe I decide, I'll retire this year, maybe not. Okay, I do retire. What's the probability I like to take benefits for myself and/or a spouse? Okay, that's great. How much are healthcare costs going to go up every year? You know, is it, we've assumed basically the equivalent of four and a half percent a year from now until the end of time. Um, they could go up by more, they could go up by less. The one thing I can assure you on any of these assumptions, and I say this every single time, and I know it sounds kind of flippant. I can assure you that we are wrong. Because I do not know when everybody's going to die. I do not know when everybody's going to retire. I do not know what medical care costs are going to be in the year twenty ninety-seven. You know, I am not Nostradamus and I cannot make that level of prediction. With that said, we adjust the assumptions every year based on data as we get more data and as we get various research studies that are done. So in terms of the benefits you're offering, you have a comprehensive, you know, medical insurance plus a five thousand dollar group term life policy. Your average single plan costs about nine hundred and sixty-four dollars a month. And your average Medicare supplement plan is about three seventy-seven a month. Your active plan is slightly more expensive than what we normally see. Your Medicare supplement plan is basically right in line with what we see. So your benefits are not, you know, gold-plated by any realm. I mean, they're basically right in line with what we would expect to see in a municipal plan in Massachusetts. Then the obvious question is, everyone's knows, well, how do I compare to everybody else? I'm setting all this money aside. How do I stack up? Well, you guys are at about twenty-five percent funded. Eighty-four percent of clients in Massachusetts, of which we have, you know. A huge majority of them there. Eighty-four percent are less than twenty percent funded, so you're definitely in the top fifteen percent of all towns in terms of how you're funding. So you've definitely done very, very well. And one of the key questions is, how do we get to use this six and three-quarters discount rate? Some people are using a lot less. Now, the biggest reason behind that is because you have an irrevocable trust. Under which you are funding a fair amount of money each year. It's reasonably aggressively invested. And you currently have a fair number of assets, twenty-five percent compared to your liabilities. Those things combined allow that to happen. So the irrevocable trust is kind of a critical element to this. Because if you didn't have an irrevocable trust, if I go back a few slides. I'll come back here for a second. That, and if I stand right side, that nine point two million becomes sixteen point four million. So, you know, taking the IR out of irrevocable adds about seven point two million dollars to your liabilities on your balance sheet. Um, and obviously would not have a favorable impact on your bond rating and things like that. So, you know, I understand that, you know, people always say, well, I don't want an irrevocable trust. It seems like, why would I want to do that? Well, we can agree or disagree on, on the rules that Gatsby has, and I will acknowledge, I don't. I think the way in which we calculate discount rate is not the way that I would do it. It's not the way that corporate America does it. But Gatsby is a political organization. And they want to help municipalities show better numbers. And that is how this is done. In corporate America, the six and three-quarters is off the table. You'd show two and a quarter percent and you show sixteen point four million dollars. But in the municipal sector, because you're willing to go to an irrevocable trust, you get certain benefits from that. Then the other obvious question is, again, how do I stack up is, okay, let's, let's see some people nearby or some people of similar size. So we're looking at some folks around you. You can look at an Ashland or a Millis or a Holliston. And this is that, I talked about that service cost per employee, that deferred comp. You guys about nineteen hundred and thirty-eight dollars per person. You know, in Holliston, who has a similar discount rate to you, it's about eighteen hundred bucks, Walpole seventeen hundred and change. So for people who are funding like you are, people have a similar discount rate to you, the numbers are close. But then you can look at someone like a Millis who's not really funding much, they're point four eight percent. Their discount rate's only three percent, which means their normal cost, their service cost is a lot higher. So again, that's the advantage of being able to have that irrevocable trust and setting that money aside. Is that allows you to show a much lower number on your financial statement. And therefore your potential bond buyers look at you as somebody who's sees the problem and is addressing the problem. And they are more likely to invest with your bonds or give you a lower interest rate. Again, this is all else equal, you know, if you have eighty-seven other problems in your financial statement. The OPEB can't save you. Um, but if the rest of your financial statement is good, OPEB can definitely be a help to you if you're with the things that you guys are doing. And the same kind of a concept, your, your costs per covered retiree annual cost are about fifty-five hundred dollars. You can see you're pretty much in line with everybody else. Medway is cheaper, but you guys are slightly below the state average and pretty much right in line with people around you. Again, this normal cost is like service cost I talked about. Again, you're nineteen hundred bucks per person, but it varies materially by function. So police employees, they tend to, uh, retire earlier and they tend to have shorter work careers. Therefore, we amortize their costs over a shorter period. So their numbers, their normal cost per year is a lot higher. School employees, admin, library, you know, highway are lower for that reason. They have longer working careers. And the obvious question is, okay, we're setting all this money aside. Well, what's it getting us? What are we doing? Well, if you look at this, you're setting aside two hundred thousand dollars a year. Based on your current pathway, by twenty forty-five, you are fully funded. At that point, you have enough money in your trust such that you can start taking money out of the trust rather than putting money in the trust and still stay fully funded. So you guys are on a pathway, unlike a lot of people. Where there is a pathway to close this out or to achieve the objective. So again, you guys are, you know, again, from a from a cash flow management standpoint, that's going to enable you guys. Whereas in the year twenty forty-five, let's say you guys have a million dollars of retiree claims versus forty-six today. You're going to be able to take almost six hundred thousand dollars out. And the obvious other question is, well, yeah, but a million dollars in twenty forty-five is, is not the same as a million dollars today. But we take that and put it into today's dollars, discount it back at three percent a year. You're at four hundred eighty-six thousand dollars today. In twenty forty-five, it's at five eighty. So your number is not changing that much over time. You have a fairly mature plan is the way I like to look at it. It's a pig in the python argument. Have, you know, largely gotten there. So you guys, your liabilities aren't going to change material over the next forty years. You know, it's a very manageable problem. And that's pretty much what I got. Um, questions, comments, concerns?
Any questions? Uh, let me take, any questions from the board first?
Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry.
Uh, oh, yeah, Marianne then Paul. So go ahead, Marianne.
Okay. Uh, yeah, this was very reassuring, actually. I, let me ask you, in the long term, in the big picture, is there any value to increasing the contribute, the two hundred thousand contribution? Uh, when we have any kind of excess cash, which we, we rarely do, but if we did. Is there any reason that that would be a good idea in the long term?
Yeah, I mean, well, well, certainly to the extent that you have excess cash. And again, as I, you know, clients ask me all the time, how much should I set aside? My answer is always going. I don't know the entire capital structure of your financial statement. You know, this is one of many capital needs the town has, but you could need a boiler tomorrow or a fire truck or a road or whatever else. But with that said, yes, more money in here sooner is better. Because I, as a potential bond buyer or S and P or Fitch or Moody's. The, the more progress you make toward getting that objective funded, that creates cash flow flexibility. So again, if we were to, you know, if you, if you were to look at this, you could say, hey, listen. And again, I always say this is the in case of emergency break glass argument, because there's nothing that would prevent you from tapping the OPEB trust in any year if you had to. My caution about that is, once you do it, you will keep going back to it. So I really discourage it unless it is that really in case of emergency break glass situation. But the more, the more you get in here, the less you have to put in in the future. And again, if you had a year where, say, you know, an extra two hundred thousand dollars available for whatever reason. That doesn't mean in some future year, you couldn't decide, hey, listen, we're having a really bad year. We're going to cut back in a year. Maybe we only put in fifty thousand this year or a hundred thousand. Or we take a hiatus. Now, again, I don't encourage that in the near term because you have a long way to go. But the one thing I can assure you is that things change. You know, that your facts, you're going to say, we're going to put the same number in for the next thirty years and nothing's going to change. There's going to be a bad year somewhere. There's going to be a recession. There's going to be good times. And the idea is really behind this and the good times. Try and set a little more money in so that when the bad time does come, you have the ability to cut back.
The only thing I would add, I would add to that, uh, Marion, is that, you know, we, this is, we, we're basically taxed, when we put two hundred thousand dollars in, that, that goes into the tax rate for this coming year. So, so we're trying to balance the long-term obligation with the near-term, uh, costs to current taxpayers because if it's something we pay for in subsequent years, that's then sharing the costs with subsequent residents of town that will be in, you know. At some future date, so the, the, the leveling out over time of this is, is an appropriate way to do it. Just as we do when we buy a new fire truck, to his example, as we, you know, bonded for twenty years, so the, uh. Just as we do when we buy a new fire truck, to his examples, we, you know, bonded for 20 years. So the, uh, debt expense is spread out and residents of the future don't get a free fire truck. Basically, they pay their portion over the life of the debt.
That makes sense. Thanks.
Uh, Paul, I would like to recognize him because he, he's, um, raised his hand before. Paul, did you have a question?
Well, Marion asked the question, the way I was going to ask it was slightly different, which was, you know, based on everything he's seen from the town of Sherburne, what, what number did he think that we should be striving for per year? And basically Marion asked the same question, but.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately comes down, as I tell every client, I was on a call yesterday, I have another one tomorrow, another one Monday. So I do a lot of these, as you might imagine. And it always comes down to really, what is the objective? In other words, is 100% funding the objective? Is 80% funding the objective? If so, over what period of time? Is 20 years the magic number? Is it 30 years? Is it 40 years? Is it 50 years? So it's really, you know, the objectives kind of get you to the answer. And then do you want to say, in your guys' case, you're doing $200,000 a year. Other people say, I'm going to do, increase it at, say, 5% a year. So, because the point is the $200,000 in 2035 is a lot less than the $200,000 in 2020. So you can make an argument for we increase this by, you know, 2%, 3%, 5% a year. It just really comes down to what is the objective and the timeframe you're trying to get this, you know, if you will, this debt retired by. Going back to that fire truck example of 20 years, do we want to retire the debt over 20 years, 25 years? And again, you know, do we want to level fund it? Or do we want to have some kind of a, a level percent of budget funding? So whenever it's increased, it's say a two and a half percent a year. So there's a lot of different ways to, 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 uh, address the issue, if you will.
I had a question. That's my, well, I know we can't rely on what I'm about to say, but just more curious. If so many towns are that underfunded on this, I mean, do you think there may be kind of like a state bailout or anything like that, state or federal bailout on this? Because at some point, you can't have like every retired person that suddenly this not get paid.
Well, I, I understand where you're coming from. On the other hand, the state has a massive problem of their own. And, you know, the feds have, you know, I guess depending on how you look at it. If the federal, if the Federal Reserve is going to, you know, buy 80 billion dollars of debt every month, maybe that, uh, it doesn't matter. But, you know, the issue is, you know, where's the money going to come from? You know, I can tell you that in the case of various municipalities, there's not a lot of them, but in case of, say, in, uh, Jefferson County, Alabama, Detroit, uh, a couple of counties in California, where they basically went bankrupt and, you know, the retirees wait in line with everybody else for OPEB benefits. Now, I'm not recommending that, but these are unsecured debts that these people have, just like any other, you know, the plumber who did work for you or anybody else. It's, they're unsecured creditor. Now, the advantage that in your case, the retirees have is that there's a trust, there's money in it. Most towns, these are largely, you know, a paper promise. In your guys' case, there's actual money backing their promise. So it's a much, your retirees are much better shaped than, say, the retirees in many other communities.
And there's also to add to that, there's a group of people that call themselves the pay as you go, uh, crowd, I think. You know, we're paying all current OPEB liability, the claims that are made this year against people that retired, you know, years ago. Correct. So we're paying the current expense. In addition to doing that, we're adding to the reserves that we have, both through the appreciation of the assets and through the $200,000 contribution, which to his point, used to be, I believe, and George can correct me, I think it was 100,000, about three or four years ago, we were only funding 100,000 and we doubled it to 200,000, I believe. So we're, we are covering the current expense of OPEB, um, liabilities incurred this year. And unless the town goes out of business, we will continue to be paying the current amount. What, what's the issue is what, you know, how, how, how much do you want to have a liability grow? And we're trying to avoid that. But it's not like we're not going to be able to pay, uh, current year benefit, OPEB benefits.
Right. And that's, that's what, to add to your point, Jeff, the, the one other thing to think about is, you know, we're going to continue to have, I think in Sherburne, it's pretty consistent that we'll have a level amount of employees. We're not going to have any huge growth or huge decline. And as the current employees continue to pay in, I think that that also helps. It's not like we're going to, our school's going to shut down and all the teachers are going to be gone. There's not going to be anybody paying into the system, so.
Yeah, and that was really the point of this, this last column here, this present value number is to show, you have them 486. Think about it, is it, is it percentage of the budget? You're paying 486 this year. You know, by, you know, 2025 is up to 497, so it's not a huge change in your budget. In 2030, it pops up a little bit because you've had some retirees, some retirees spike in the next five or six years, supposed to have a fair number of retirees that'll pop up. But then it starts coming back down a little bit by 2040. And then, you know, even a little more by 20, you know, 2050. So you have a fairly stable population size, both in terms of the active side as well as the retiree population. So again, I don't, I don't foresee hockey stick growth in your liabilities or your payments. So I think you have a, you know, relatively manageable liability size.
There you go. Um, anything else on the board? And otherwise I'll take any questions from the general audience. I always ask people, use your virtual hand raise. I can't see both pages of, uh, people waving hands.
Probably can stop.
Can you actually stop sharing, Parker? So then if.
Yeah, yeah.
Get a few more people, that would be great.
Of course. Sorry about that.
That's good.
Good job.
Yes. Yeah, thank you very much. Well, I do not see anyone with a virtual hand raise thing if there's no other questions, um.
Does Heidi want to add? Heidi may want to add something. I don't.
Let me, let me ask Heidi something. Heidi, if we have follow-up questions, should we like approach you, I know, in the day, coming days or weeks, if we think of something?
Yes. And then, uh, Deb Seifring and I can work with, um, Parker to get answers or, you know, in a future presentation again, but I'd like to get this to be an annual update that everyone hears what's going on. Cause I know the town had some questions about OPEB and unfunded, but we're really not in a horrible shape. And I think that's the key takeaway here is.
Oh, absolutely.
We do have a plan.
Um, just one, one thing quick. Frank Orlando, I think I see your hand. You need to put your virtual for Eric to notice you.
Yeah, I can't figure out how to do that. Sorry.
Okay. Do you want to recognize Frank?
Absolutely, Frank. Go ahead. No, I just look at the columns, am I right?
Eric said something that, that triggered a question. And that is if we're funding current retiree liabilities out of operating expenses, when do we start using this fund for retirees?
Well, like I said, at this stage, you're projected to be fully funded in the early 2040s, so 2042, 2043, something like that. So at that stage, you would start taking money out to pay expenses. And so, you know, the, the taxpayers in 2043 are going to say, thank you very much to, uh, what you guys have done. Um, you know, because they, it would definitely smooth out liabilities. And that's why I mentioned before, it's really the question of what is your, what is your timeframe or your objective and about when do you want to reach that point? So right now you're on a target.
Money's in from free cash between now and then, that date moves in.
Correct. Or if you have, you know, you have more 27% years in the stock market, that helps out a lot. Um, I'm, I'm not forecasting that, just so we're all clear. But if that happens, that's a wonderful thing. Um, but yeah, so that's, uh, anything that helps get that fund up higher quicker. On the other hand, if healthcare costs go up more than expected, that will push out the date. So again, we have, you know, it's like anything, there's two different sides of the coin. But, uh, that, that is really how we get there.
Got you. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you again.
Eric, Michael Lester has a stand up.
Oh, he does. And Michael, thank you first. Thank you for using the virtual hand. Of course, the pictures. Yeah, Michael, go ahead.
For everybody else, you find it under reactions. Um, if you want to do it. Um, some of this has been touched on. I guess I was trying to figure out. It looks like in terms of what we're putting in and then taking out on one of those tables, on one of the tables that you were showing, that there was quite a dramatic change between like putting in a bunch and then sort of we could take out expenses or of many hundreds of thousands. Uh, and then there's this, and so it seems like a fairly sharp switch. And whether there's a way you phase it that's more gradual in terms of that kind of thing versus what we do. And the other related thing is when we fund capital investments, we generally talk about the life of the investment. So we look at financing things over what's its useful life. In this case, I'm not sure what a useful life is or what a, you keep saying, what's your goal? What's your goal? And I want to go back to you and say, what is useful, what are the kind of useful numbers that we should think about? Is it a matter of how many years out does, if, obviously there's a lot of things that go into our bond rating. But whether, if other things are basically good, what, what do they, what would affect our bond rating, for example, in terms of when they would see us coming to full payment, full coverage or not? Um, whether you can give guidance as to what that life should be over when we should meet it all. So two points there.
Absolutely. Yeah. As far as, you know, the bond rating issues and what goes into that, I mean, I know we just put up a white paper on that a week or two ago, and we're happy to share that with you guys. Um, by how pensions and OPEB reflect that, because they're really two sides of the same coin. I mean, the pensions and the OPEB in terms of, you know, hate to use the words useful life in terms of a retiree or an active employee, so I'll change it slightly. And say that in the state, on the pension side, you have to be fully funded by 2040. The state has set that through its legislation. So on the OPEB side, there is no such obligation to fund by any date certain. Um, so it's a matter of, you know, would you guys as a community decide, okay, we want to be fully funded by 2045 or 2050 or whatever? And then to your other comment about the, the abrupt change from putting money in to taking money out. I mean, yes, as we get closer to that date, I would think the community is going to want to look to some kind of a phased approach. I mean, right at this stage, we're just trying to, you know, I'm not going to predict how you guys are going to handle. You know, if you're also on the Board of Selectmen in 2045, we're still having these conversations, you know, we can do that. Um, but I think, you know, the reality is there's probably going to be, uh, new people looking at that in 2042, 2043. And they may have a different perspective in terms of how they want to phase those things in. But I think to your point, there's not a magic date. So it's not a matter of, I'm trying to dodge the question rather, but the state on the pension side has picked 2040 is the magic date. I think in your guys' case, around 2036, I think is when your system's going to hit that date. I don't have it in front of me. I don't have it in front of me at the time, but, but, uh, but I mean, so the question is, when, when is that date? There's not a fixed one. But I think it's something you guys as a community have to decide. And then again, in terms of the rating agencies, what they want to see is pensions and OPEB are generally for most communities, the two largest items on your balance sheet. So the question is, how do we, how do we take these liabilities off your balance sheet? So that's really what we're trying to do here is how do we, how do we take these off these huge, you know, elephants in the room and get them down to be, you know, the little gnats or the mice, so they're not, you know, absorbing every, every, you know, having these conversations every year going, oh my God, we get this giant liability. What do we do? Rather than how do we go, it's a manageable little thing. It's not that big a deal. We, we take a little money out, we put a little money in. That's really what we're trying to get to here. And the question is, over what time? But there is no magic number. Again, you guys, is to Heidi's point, are far, far better off than most communities. Most communities, the idea of being fully funded in 2042, 2043 is, is a dream. Um, you know, so you guys have a pathway to get there. So when you have your call with the ratings agencies, you guys can show them a plan and how you're getting out from under this. Most communities can't do that. So it's just really a matter of how you choose to go about that.
I would just clarify that a tiny bit, Parker, and you can correct what I miss say, but this school's amount you show here is for our elementary school. I believe we have a separate OPEB account for our regional school system, which is a joint, joint. So we have a separate, separate OPEB liability for the regional school employees. It's not funded quite as strongly as this one, I believe.
Correct. Yeah, this does not reflect any regionalizations or anything like that, or any electric plants or anything like that that's not included in this.
Just one other thing that Parker mentioned, I think the only person likely to be on the select board in 2045 is Paul Durant.
Oh.
The rest of us will be collecting OPEB benefits. Exactly.
All right, Paul, we'll make it, we'll make a date for 2045. I'll see you then.
I was trying to find a way to work in that same joke, by the way, but they. All right, um, anything else? All right, there we go. Well, thank you very much, Parker. Very good information. And, uh, as other people said, not that we, um, should lift up our guard or anything, but we've been hearing doomsday for decades on this. And I think it's nice to hear something slightly different. That's good.
Always good to deliver good news. Well, thank you for the time. And if you have, have questions, reach out to Heidi or myself and we'll get to whatever we can to get you squared away.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Bye.
It's also due to advisory. Mary Wolf's on here now too. Advisory really took this pretty seriously 10 years ago. And since then, has been working pretty steadily at it with Maria's chair and George's chair. So it's been, uh, not all luck, is what I'd say.
Okay. So continuing on with Heidi, we, um, a statement about consideration of useful life statement.
Yes, thank you. So what I have put in your packet is to get a vote on the items that the equipment items that were voted at the ATM 20 and ATM 21 that would require um, a life vote, um, to say that this is what we would bond for a period of years. This is forms, DLS has a guidelines of how many years you can do it. So I've put an estimate here for, for a number of years, such as the hose replacement. 10 years, even though we do get longer, uh, it's something that we can only bond for a certain amount. And S and P actually looks to have the majority of items borrowed to be 10 years or less. They, there, there's a factor that they try to look into that does, that does have a slight weight. So the hose replacement, which was $37,000, I thought was reasonable to put in a 10-year amount as trying to say 20 or 25 years. Uh, police department cruisers, I talked with Chief Bento, and it's a five-year average, probably is about right on these ones. Some get a little bit more. Hopefully, but I don't want to be in a position where we borrowed money for five years and at four years we have to replace it because then we still owe money on something that we are now no longer using. So I'm trying to pick numbers that will be conservative and fit. DPW equipment, uh, that's the Toro Dingo that we just voted and it's attachments, five years for that one. The one-ton truck is about a 10-year item, portable radios, about 10 years, and the wheeled excavator put a lifespan on 10 years as well. So if this is something that all of you are comfortable with, I would like to have a motion to accept the useful life statement as presented. And then I'd work out with Marion as clerk. She would have to sign this on behalf to say that the vote happened and it was approved.
All right. The only question I had is, uh, the radars are 10 years. Is that, that seems a little long? Is that, is that appropriate?
I asked Zach, uh, and I don't know if he's on this one, but, um, he seemed comfortable with 10 years.
All right. You know, all right. And any motions? Yeah, Paul?
So I move approval of the list as presented by the town treasurer.
In a second. Um, all in favor, uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, Marion?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
I'm also, I, okay, very good. Thank you very much, Heidi.
Thank you.
Uh, next we have up here, consideration of complete streets application. Chris Owen, uh, Chris Owen, I'm sorry, the planning board chair. I saw him here earlier.
Do you need to share your screen, Chris, or are you just going to talk?
I'm just going to talk.
Okay.
Hi, Chris. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, good evening. Um, as you guys know, um, the current complete streets projects are finishing up and there's another round of funding that will be available starting October 1st. So about six weeks ago, the planning board, we sat down, well, I sat down with, um, DPW director. And, and we looked at different projects that were part of the complete streets, um, profile that was set up in 2018. And we came up with three projects that he thought were doable and were, and were, would be within the budget of the 190,000 that would be potentially available to us. I hate to switch things at the last minute, but we found out today, and I was speaking to Gino about the sidewalk from the pilgrim church parking lot up to the library. And it turns out today, we found out that the late bus will be dropping off at that parking lot with the intention of the kids walking up to the library. So the three, um, projects that we looked at, um, I would actually like to scrap the top two. Um, I guess we had an estimate in 2018 of $47,000 to put in about 300 feet of sidewalk from pilgrim church parking lot up to the library. And we had an estimate in 2018 of 105,000 for the South Main Street, um, intersection to clean that up. Um, so I believe Sean approves of this switch. And what we would like to do is we would like to get it back to you. I don't know if we need another meeting, but I'd just like to get a little more details. Um, this just happened about two hours ago. So.
Okay.
So I support the switch. I think the the fact, the fact that children are involved, I'm a parent, I think all, all of us are parents. Children are the future. And that is a dangerous street. Have some means for the children to walk safely is important. Good for you, Chris, to come up with that.
Yeah, thank you.
It doesn't make sense, Chris. Uh, could you just, uh, reiterate, you know, uh, the, it, it's 190,000 that you will have.
Um, well, yes, um, well, there's 190,000 potentially available out of the 400 that each town could potentially apply for. So we have 190,000 again, that we can apply for, um, and Sean's concern. And Sean's concern, his only concern was that the estimates obviously in 2021 are a little higher than 2018. But these two projects in $2,018 were 152,000. So that gives us like a $40,000 buffer, which I'm hoping we should be able to, that's 20%. We should be able to stay within that.
Oh, right. So that, uh, I think everyone agrees that that sidewalk to the library is extremely important. That's a really good priority. Is there room in the budget for a second thing too? I think you said two projects or are you just looking to fund the one?
I was looking to fund to the sidewalk and the South Main Street intersection. As you know, there was a bad accident there not that long ago. And, and if you look in the complete streets plan, they want to sharpen it up, put in handicap accessible, um, crosswalks. And there, there's a whole list of things they wanted to do with that intersection and there's enough money to apply for both projects.
Yeah, good. Is, is the South Main Street intersection, the intersection is with what road?
Maple.
27 and Goulding Street.
And Goulding Street. Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
So, um,
Jeff, it's not the maple. I, I, that was actually
That's what I thought.
What about maple and Washington? I feel like that's probably if, if I may, in town, my wife had an accident there in the last two years. I think it's, it's, um, have you looked at, is there anything we could do?
That.
Section with these funds.
Yes, that's actually number one on our list. But that's a much bigger project and engineering, we can't use complete speech money for engineering. That con, that conversation's been had over the last 10 years. And every time I talked to Gino, I said, you know what? Let's get our, our busy business out of the way. And that's going to be the next big project we want to look at. Our anticipation is the next round, if complete streets has another round of funding, we'll have a $400,000 pile that we would all put hopefully toward the Maple Street intersection. So that's a discussion we would like to have in the fall. But that's a much larger discussion. So, but yes.
And sorry if I missed it, but what's being done at, um, South Main and Goulding?
Well, if, I don't know, did you receive the, the complete street? And basically there's a diagram of tightening up the sidewalk. Basically, there is a big diagram in the thing, but it's, but it's basically cleaning it up, making it much safer, improving the sight lines and making it more pedestrian safe.
Want to make one? An add to that.
I will say, one of my concerns of that intersection, I use that intersection a fair amount, is actually the, uh, non-stop controlled crosswalk. A lot of times people get in these mid, what's called a mid-block crosswalk. People get in these mid-block crosswalks. They feel very protected. But there have actually been many deaths, um, here in the Boston area. People were walking in mid-block crosswalks and, um, with a false sense of safety. So I, um, that's why I'm just kind of curious of it. Maybe I'll look at it and touch base with you later, but um, I'm almost a belief that crosswalk shouldn't be there, necessarily as it sounds, but.
Well, what they, what they want to do is they want to narrow the crosswalk by about 50%. They want, they want to make it a much smaller crosswalk and straighten out as, as the cars come down to 27.
Okay.
So.
Okay, take a look then. Either way.
So, so basically what I'm asking
Do you want to, do you want to?
Mary is, okay, yeah. Uh, Sean, please go ahead.
Uh, I was going to start with Sanger Street, but since you're on it, I'll, Goulding Street on the West Goulding side is a very, very wide fork intersection, which we have plenty of. And, uh, it is, the new term, Eric, as you are well aware, is the road diet.
Yep.
It is to square off some of that intersection. The intent will be to square off both sides because the, the, the fatality that we had was on the East Goulding side, but both sides, you can make the corner too fast and it's very dangerous for, uh, for people if they're in the crosswalk. The crosswalk's only on one side of, um, South Main going across West Goulding, but it's, I don't remember the measurements. It's shown on the complete streets thing, but it is to narrow that down, square people up. Cause there's actually a fair amount of T-bone hits there too, with cars coming around the corner on South Main.
Yeah.
The Sanger Street. Yeah. The, the Sanger Street sidewalk is, has really come to a head lately now that there's a, um, a beautiful concrete walkway that comes out the lower level of, of the library, which few people have had the pleasure of using, but it just drops to an awkward spot on Sanger Street. And I've been asked by countless people if we can put a crosswalk. Of course, the crosswalk that we've come off, that goes nowhere. It actually just goes into what is technically a private, uh, parking lot. So it would be a great opportunity to put a sidewalk down Sanger Street, walking Sanger Street. And I've done it a lot since we started the, the project in the library. It's, it's pretty tough. And, and, you know, I wouldn't want my kids walking on that if it was the late bus, you know, in the winter in the dark. It, it, I mean, it's, it's part of the town campus. It's, it's, it'll be a great addition. Not the easiest one to put in, but it'll be a great addition to that area.
Okay.
And actually, while like you got the, um, the Sanger Street to George's question. That needs, that's waiting on engineering. So we're actually in the early stages of figuring out what we're going to need to do on that. Like, uh, Chris mentioned that we, we got to self-fund our engineering. Uh, there was some preliminary work done for the plan. And I'll probably be coming back to ask if we can use some of the money that we have currently in, in authorizations to use to do some of the early stages of the engineer. And so I mean, we know what we're going to do with that intersection. It's, it's in all likelihood going to be a rotary. And we, we have the land to do it. So.
Yep. Talk about that. Um, all right, uh, Mary Ann.
Yeah, a quick question, uh, Chris and Sean, uh, regarding the, um, South Main Street, Goulding Street intersection plan, which sounds like a good plan. Uh, you mentioned that the crosswalk, if there is a crosswalk, that the plan is to make it narrower. What's the thinking there? It seems to me narrower crosswalks are more difficult to see for, for oncoming cars to see. And so
No, we meant shorter, the distance, the length of the crosswalk.
Oh, oh, great.
The picture, if you're crossing Goulding West on South Main Street, it's about an 80 foot walk from one end to the other. So you want to shorten that up, just as they've done in downtown Natick and, and elsewhere.
Yeah.
You don't want to hang people up too long.
Okay, good. Yeah, that's good. I just misheard.
Okay, anything else? Sean, your hand is still up. I'm assuming you're done or? Okay. Um, okay. Nothing else. Uh, so you need a vote from us basically to approve as proposed.
Yeah. What I would like to do is, is I'd like to present it to you in better form. So Gina will delete these two, add in what we want, and then get it to you just to look at if that's okay. And that, and that'll be done Monday or Tuesday.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And as the select board looks at it, I guess feel free to, um, contact me if you want another agenda item on this. Otherwise I'll consider this, uh, deliverable, basically our information on it. Do you eventually need a vote from us?
It would be nice, but, um, but I don't think there's a reason to have to come back. We have until October 1st for him to apply. And you have several meetings before then. So I would just like you to look at it, it completed rather than this way.
Okay. In fact, we actually have one extra meeting because we're every other week now again. Okay. Um, if there's nothing else, and thank you again, Chris, I'm going to move on to a next agenda item, agenda item number six. Yeah, thank you very much. Good to see that. Um, there's a consideration of, uh, various appointments. I'll just read them as they are on the agenda. Um, Library Board of Trustees. So, oh, actually, so, um, Brian, are you on here? Do you have to call your meeting to order?
Yeah, I do. So, uh, if I can do that now, Eric, it's Brian Conley. I'm going to call the Library Board of Trustees meeting to order uh, with a roll call vote. Uh, Brian Conley, yes?
Erin Carroll, yes.
Max Kleisner, yes.
Christina Alme, yes.
Sue Lepard, yes.
Great. Okay. So thanks. We've got a quorum. Uh, a few couldn't make it, but we do have a quorum. So we can move forward.
Okay, very good. So this now is to basically, um, vote in or nominate, uh, Mary McKenna to fill a vacancy until the 2022 annual town election. I guess, um, do you, Brian, want to make any statement or is Mary want to make any statement? Uh, does we consider this?
Yeah, I mean, I'll make a, a quick comment and then turn it over to Mary. We, uh, Mary joined our trustees meeting last week and, and gave some of her background and interest. And I think the select board has seen her, her application, but she's just a really strong candidate. She's, uh, got an MLS in library science, a PhD and information transfer. She led the, uh, Friends of the Library at, at Morse Institute in Natick. So she's worked with a community library. And she's, uh, got a really strong career in, uh, technology as well as having kids in the school system. And, um, and I, I think Mary could probably correct me, but I think the first time she's serving on committee, so checks the box for being a kind of a new voice and, and, uh, bringing, uh, you know, a new citizen to the table for us. And I'll turn it over to Mary if she wants to talk about, uh, her background and answer any questions.
Sure. Thanks, Brian. Um, so you pretty much covered all the points there. Um, I did really, I went to library science school, did my masters and did my PhD thinking I would teach in library school. My professor started a tech company and I've been in tech companies ever since. Um, but I am still incredibly passionate about delivering the best library service possible. Um, and I'd be delighted to join this board.
Thank you very much, Mary, for volunteering. It's a lot. Thank you very much. So I guess, uh, Brian, um, I guess I'll leave it up to you to collect the vote of your board and then I'll collect the vote of the select board.
Okay. So, uh, Brian Conley, yes?
Max Kleisner, yes.
Frank Orlando, yes.
Christine. Erin Carroll, yes.
So I keep jumping in. Officially, someone has to like nominate in a second. So
Okay, I'm sorry. All right. Let me, uh, so, uh, Brian Conley, I nominate Mary McKenna for library trustee. And can I get a second?
And I think your vote party counts.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And now up there to the select board, uh, do we have any nominations relative to this, uh, this appointee? Or applicant?
Yes, I would mean, go ahead. Yep.
Paul nominated. Okay.
I was second, Paul's not.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, uh, Mary Ann?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Okay. Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Uh, Paul?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
And I'm yes as well. Very good. Well, thank you very much, Mary, for, for volunteering. Very impressive skill set.
From now on, all boards we appoint have to have PhDs in the subject matter of that board. You set a new standard for us, Mary. Thank you.
Now, Brian, I don't know if you want to stay in session through the executive session or not, as we come up with something relative to the library. I'll leave that up to you. Otherwise I'll actually, I'll move on to the, uh, um, MAPC. We have here a nomination for, uh, Mary Nudja for a reappointment for a term to expire on June 15th, 2024.
So.
So move that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I'm going to put you last, Mary Ann. Uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Uh, Mary Ann, I guess you vote on this? I guess you do.
I, I guess so. Yeah, I, I should say we did put out a call for other candidates. I would, I would have happily stepped aside, but no one stepped forward. So I am totally willing to resume, uh, to continue, I should say, uh, being the MAPC rep. It's really quite interesting. So.
Thank you for doing that.
I'm going to officially vote as well, just before, yeah. Um, MAPC, do you work at Eric Barazza there? And there's a trust.
Eric?
Yeah, Eric Barazza, someone who I, I work with directly as transportation stuff. Either way, I don't want to waste, uh,
Actually, I met him at an, at an MAPC event about 10 days ago.
Yeah, he's pretty good. So.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to the Sherburne Open Space Committee. We have, um, two applicants, um, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce any names here, Tim Batshelder and Samuel Nelson.
So moved.
All right. Now a second?
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, Mary Ann?
Well, Eric, they're both here. Do you want to?
Yeah.
Say, but since they came to our meeting, like.
Actually, could I, if any, if either wants to say something briefly, please, uh, raise your virtual hand. Just so I can see you.
The chair of the Open Space Committee is here, Kelly Mc, McClintock. He might also introduce them.
Sure. I would just want to say neither Tim or Sam happens to have a PhD degree. Oh, my God. Both are committed to our mission. Uh, we are looking forward to have both of them with us and hope you will approve the nominations.
Very good. I do want to say that this isn't solo. I do want to say that Mary Ann actually has a PhD as well. So actually we're two for two up until this one, but okay. Do we view, um, either Tim or Samuel, do you want to, um, say something briefly?
I'll say something quickly. Uh, really appreciate the opportunity. I think Sherburne, um, has an amazing natural resources set and, um, that's one of the reasons we moved here. So it's, it's really important for me to join this committee and help participate in, in furthering that objective. So thanks for the opportunity.
Very good. Thank you for volunteering. Absolutely.
And Sam, I think, do you want to say something, Sam?
I, I would echo exactly the same that, uh, Tim just said, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Uh, echo the same thing that I'm very happy to, to serve in this capacity, uh, on the open space along with my service on Forest and Trail and Library Committee. And, um, just to let you know, there is, I am another PhD. So we're running a, a, a string of at least three out of four here.
I was going to correct that, a PhD in history. Relevant to everything. So.
Only repeats itself. All right. Uh, so we actually have a motion and a second here with the board to nominate, um, both these applicants. So I'll go around and do, and collect the vote. Uh, Mary Ann?
Hi.
Uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, George?
Hi.
And I lost Paul. Always pay his photographs on my
He's there, he's there.
Hi.
I got locked my screens or something. Okay, very good. And thank you both as well.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda number seven, uh, considering of, um, acceptance of ARPA act, Opera Funds. That's American Rescue Plan Act Funds. Uh, who is speaking on this? Is it Heidi?
I know it's me.
Yeah.
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 I, um, in accordance with Massachusetts General Logs, uh, chapter 44, section 53A. I am looking to have the select board accept the county allocation of the funds from the American Rescue Plan Act and the amount of 842,022 and 94 cents.
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor, um, Mary Ann?
I.
Uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
I'm always in favor of taking money for the community. Count on my vote. That's a yes.
Someday they say no. Um, George?
Right.
I might as well. Great. Thank you very much, Steph.
Thank you.
Um, number eight, consideration of declaration of Sherburne Affordable Housing Trust, Eddie Mae Weiss, Wayne Weiss.
Hi, I'm here, but I can't get my video to turn on for some reason tonight. I'm, um, at a soccer game. Anyway, I, um, I'm hoping that this is pretty straightforward at this point. We've, uh, this was just, it's a formality. We've got the language vetted by a town council and, uh, it's been reviewed. Hopefully you all have seen it. I know Paul Durensis gave me some, um, good changes and then those were further vetted. So I think we're in good shape. The housing trust met last Tuesday, the committee, and we unanimously supported all the changes suggested by town council and, um, Paul Durensis.
Okay, very good. Go ahead, Paul. Yeah, please.
Motion that the Board of Selectmen establish a trust in the form of the Declaration of Trust as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor, Marion?
Yes.
Uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
Uh, George?
Second time I voted I on this, but yes, I.
I, I.
And I might as well.
Can I make a further motion?
Yeah, please.
They, they don't have the funds to record the trusts. So let's move that the Board of Selectmen budget pay for the recording of the trust. It was, I think, 200, maybe $75.
Oh, yeah.
Second.
Okay.
Do we even need to vote that actually? It can just happen. Oh, either way. Okay, uh, Mary Ann?
I.
Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
George? George?
Hi.
And I'm also, I, very good, you said, so.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, very good. Excellent. And thank you for all the work you've been doing on this. You know, I say, we say this all the time, how we appreciate volunteers, but it never sees the blow me away, how much of volunteer is actually on, what they do and how much they run this town. Okay, while that being said, um, number nine, consideration of a fall twenty twenty-one special town meeting date. Um, who is speaking to this?
One thing I want to just bring up before we start talking about this. I put a call into Mark Mastrioni from Pulte today. I haven't heard back from him, just to get an idea of where we stand with both Framingham and Natick. Because I think the precipitous to this is um, our intermunicipal agreements with both Framingham and Natick related to Coolidge Street. And before we set a town meeting, I think we need to know what our status is, like where where we're at with them. So I'm trying to get, I I don't, David Williams has been involved at all, David, but where we stand right now, is it time to set a town meeting, or is it a little premature?
Mr. Chair, can I speak?
Yeah, oh, yeah, please, yeah.
Our um, town council on this is Greg Corbo, and we're, we've lined him up to um, come to the September ninth meeting and meet with uh, meet with the board on that. Uh, at this time, it looks like there a fall special town meeting is not needed because the Natick portion of the um, of the IMA for with Natick needs to go to the Natick Town Meeting, which will not go there till next spring. So um, if the town wanted to proceed uh, with the Framingham side uh, and do the Water District, we could do that in the fall. But it's not going to advance the project any further unless you do both of them, you know, get both IMAs in hand, so. But I'll have Greg explain it more at the next um, the next meeting, but that's, I, I I wouldn't set a date right now as far as. I'd wait till you talk.
That, that's what I thought, and and from what I've heard with Natick, I think the issue is they've had turnover with their town administrator with, it just really, nothing has progressed with Natick, and um, I want to try to get a meeting set up. I'm happy to do it with a selectman from Natick, just so we can have a discussion about, I I just want to make sure that they're in the same realm as us when it comes to what we're thinking on Coolidge, so, because I'm not, I'm not even sure of that, so.
Yeah, Greg um, has a better handle on what uh, the issues are for them uh, and their attorney, but as far as I know that they they are planning to bring the IMA forward for next spring.
Okay.
But but Greg can explain um, their position better.
Even with Framingham, I mean, I agree that we should try to do them at the same time, but it'd be a big deal to try and put language together and basically a month and a half or whatever it would have to be.
And and if we don't need to have a special town meeting, I'm sure Jackie will jump for joy. And especially the years she's had. So I mean, there's no reason to have the expense of a special town meeting. We don't need it, so there's no reason to set one now.
That's the point I was gonna make, that special town meeting is past money. Yeah. And just from the point of view of being a taxpayer, why spend money on something that we know we're going to have to have a second duplicate town meeting on for the other community? Include both Natick and Framingham, so it doesn't make any sense to double our costs.
No.
Right.
Okay, so, oh, yeah, um, Marian?
I have a kind of general information question that some of the public may be interested in too. Once that, I want to Natick is essentially on board and willing to do this for sure. How long does it take? What's involved in an intermunicipal agreement? How much of, how much work and what kind of lead time does it take to actually hammer out the language? Uh, just an estimate, like ballpark?
We, we already have draft IMAs.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it would be um.
That's not a limiting factor.
Yes.
I think it's the timing of votes to to approve IMAs. That's probably the most time consuming piece.
Right. What about the MWRA piece?
I'm just gonna jump in here real quick that I'm gonna ask you, I thought this is gonna be more just logistics on the setting a town meeting date, but if we're talking about the project, I'm gonna have Jeff chair this.
Uh, right, and you don't have to address this right now. I can ask you privately if you like, but uh, there was an MWRA agreement separate from the Framingham Agreement, and I just wonder if we know where that stands.
Uh, again, um, Greg Corbo will give you the most current status on it, but MWRA hasn't been um, a problem, at least in the past year and a half that I've spoken to. Uh, they seem to love to sell water, so that's, that's their interest.
Okay.
Yeah, but if I could, the problem is that the MWRA requires communities who are taking water to actually join the MWRA. And it's part of joining, that they ask for us to contribute towards the costs that they've already incurred, that all the other communities have incurred, so there's an entrance fee.
Where now, Paul? I don't think that's relevant, because the developer is buying water from Framingham, so it's not Sherburne. That's, that's buying water from the MWRA. If if I'm correct on that, I think we've talked about this in the past, and you've brought this up in the past. And it's a fact that this is an agreement, this is a tri-party agreement between the developers. The only part Sherburne has is that the pipes are running under our roads, so therefore, the developers are buying water from Framingham. Framingham has the agreement with the MWRA.
Oh, so then my question's irrelevant, basically. We don't have a separate agreement with MWRA.
I don't think so.
No, we, we have.
I think we need to talk to our council about that at our next meeting. There's no point in discussing it tonight. I think that, I think, let's bring it up with our council, just to be certain on that, but my understanding is because of the agreement that it's a private developer paying for all the water, and Sherburne is not actually buying the water from MWRA, that we don't have to have that agreement with the MWRA.
We should confirm that with the MWRA.
Definitely.
Yeah, they are involved.
Well, with our, yes, I think through our council, Paul, so. Jeff, I think you're in charge.
Yeah, I don't think any other, it's a scary thought for me too, George. I don't think, I don't think there's any other issues discussed here, but I think it does sound not likely that we'll have a fall town meeting.
No.
So I think, I think that's, there's nothing to vote on that I know of, and you said, I think, David, the ninth of September is when um, this, the attorney will present on this?
Yes.
Is that right?
Great.
Okay, so let's go on uh, to item number ten, consideration of routine business. Select board, the only thing I was gonna say is that we're still looking at um, COVID issues. You know, we voted, had a kind of controversial vote last week about masking in the schools, but the new school superintendent and the Boards of Health um, recommended and approved masking requirements for all students in all the Sherburne schools, including the regional schools for students, teachers, and staff, but it's gonna be reevaluated weekly. I mean, there's a group of people who feel like they shouldn't have masks. We were kind of disappointed in this state, and they finally, they finally came back this week and just yesterday, I think, uh, hang on, I gotta tell Eric to come back. They came and announced, you know, that they're gonna mandate statewide through the end of um, September, at least October first, that everyone be masked. And the biggest issue, as you all probably know, is just because the students in primarily Pine Hill, but I think sixth grade, don't have access to vaccines yet. So because they don't have anyone under any vaccines for under the age of twelve. So what we may.
Add to that, Jeff, I was on that meeting as well, like, one thing I'm impressed to see was that the Dover Sherburne community or the schools, I think it was a ninety-five percent vaccination rate, which is pretty impressive for our towns and, which I think, hopefully that means down the road, we can, we can be a little easier than, because I know one thing I heard on the news today was community, like what the state recommendation is, they're gonna reevaluate October first, and if people are over eighty percent vaccinated, then maybe they have the option of, of limiting the mask requirements.
They're debating that now, that uh, the the bad news is we've actually had a decent size, I won't give numbers, uptick in COVID cases in Sherburne and Dover in the last two weeks. And it's actually more scary because it's, you know, primarily people that are unvaccinated, so it's a much smaller base of people, to your point about ninety-five. So if we're getting an uptick and they only have five percent of the population not being vaccinated. Now, a number of the cases in Dover and a smaller number in Sherburne were breakthrough case, so-called breakthrough cases, whereas people with, who are vaccinated, still got COVID in in both Sherburne and Dover. So um, the the perception that it's not in the community is not necessarily good, it's a subset, and the breakthrough cases are probably greatly understated, because if you get, if you're vaccinated and you get COVID, but you don't have, a lot of times you won't have symptoms, so you won't know to get tested, but you can still be transmitting the disease, even though you're vaccinated, you can still be a a vector, as they call it. So um, and Marian, you feel free to correct anything I missed state.
Yeah, no, I was going to uh, follow up with just a comment uh, in the COVID team uh, meeting, when was it? Today, this morning. Uh, we also talked about uh, keeping meetings virtual for now, to keep a town hall safe and Sherburne residents safe. And I'm not sure if this is a place to bring that up again. We didn't make a final decision, but the sense was that meeting virtually is the way to go in the face of the Delta variant and the new wave of uh, cases in unvaccinated people and including breakthrough cases with vaccinated people. And given the fact that we still have a student population that's largely unvaccinated, so Jeff, may, you may want to add to that.
No, I think it's gonna be on the next border health agenda to discuss, you know, any, any further issues, but I just wanted to update that we um, sort of predated the state and and our intention is to reevaluate it weekly. May not be necessary to reevaluate it weekly until the end of September, because we can always be stricter in this state, but we can't be less strict in the state.
And I'll just say for the record, I'm not recusing myself off of uh, routine business.
Okay, we, I'm sorry, I forgot. I got, I, 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 I got, you know, ego, uh, ego, ego trip here. So um, anyway, long story short, more to come on COVID, but there has been an uptick in in Dover and Sherburne in both towns, um, so we're just being cautious still.
And uh, did you say you don't know or didn't want to say what the number was, like how many positive?
I I don't want to say, because we.
They used to report them. Didn't they used to report the numbers, like when we're doing?
I think they are on the mass DPH site, but I'd rather not quote them, but um, the the thing is just to be aware that it's there, and it's, it's not a huge number, but as I said to George, if we've got ninety-five percent vaccinated and we have that many people, it's primarily in that five percent that it's occurring.
And the, and the good news is with that vaccination rate, I think people that are vaccinated, if they do get COVID, breakthrough COVID, it's supposed, from what I've read, it's very mild and very, you know, comparatively to people that are unvaccinated.
I may not, yeah, it may be a require hospitalization, and then another issue that's gonna be on the Board of Health in the next, maybe three or four weeks probably, is uh, booster shots. Understand what to do with booster shots, so there's people that are, you know, clamoring for that, particularly some of the J and J people who only got one shot the first time are wondering what to do. So, but the J and J was approved about two months after the Moderna and Pfizer, so technically those people have only been vaccinated for about five months.
Right, but I I I don't think we'll be deciding anything about boosters locally. It's just a matter of where where the uh, the state and country is going on now.
Yeah, we'll just be providing uh, information. Anybody have any questions or? And we're still doing, even for the, you know, we were doing contact tracing all along for COVID, uh, people who test the positive, so we're contact tracing breakthrough cases also.
Yeah. So I asked for the uh, town minister to report, sir.
Yeah, unless you you have on the agenda here the meeting calendar, but we.
We talked about that. Yeah, move that up to the, to the.
I jumped it up, because it's kind of also, that's what we talked about before, was a meeting date.
Yep, okay.
Absolutely. Uh, I guess any town administrator reports?
I'm good, Eric.
Okay, no, that's good. Okay, well, I further do, um, we'll move on to executive session. So as Chair, I declare that executive session is warranted uh, for the agenda items as previously read by the town administrator. Um, can I have a second? All right, I'm, okay.
Kind of like, get out, open it up.
Marian?
Addie, Addie, you're, you're, need to mute.
Okay, uh, Marian?
I.
Um, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
All right. Thank you. We are now back in open session, act, um, after exiting executive session. There are no more agenda items or um, topics to be discussed. Can I have a motion to um, close the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Marian?
Hi.
Paul?
Uh, no.
Nah, that's right. Better hope that, George.
Keep talking all night.
He's got the Chuck Yeon role there.
I know.
Thanks, guys.
All right, good night. Well, thank you all.
Good job.